It looks like you have it, Amy.
Okay.
No, I don't see anybody. Hold on. Okay.
You good?
I think so.
Okay. All right, let's call the meeting to order and begin by saying be pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic which is one nation under one law, indivisible, liberate and honest.
All right, let's recess into solid waste.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 11th, 2020.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the June 18, 2020 bills as presented by the county auditor.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move to approve the June 18, 2020 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move to approve the June 18, 2020 then announce certification as presented by the county auditor.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. And Bill?
Yes, ma'am.
You want to give us a quick update on the correspondence with Brimfield?
Right, as you know, last Thursday, I sent a letter to Brimfield with our proposal of $3 per month every other week service from July 1st until December 31st of this year. The rate would increase to $3.75 a month from January 1 through June 30th of 2021. And basically, one-year contract with those dates from June, excuse me, July 1st of 2020 through June 30th of 2021. The board voted that down, or excuse me, the township trustees voted that down and sent us a counterproposal, which I received yesterday. The counterproposal is they would remain at $2.25 a month for every other week service from the same time period as what we proposed. And we have, or they asked us for a five-day response to their counterproposal. And then, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, I was just, Bill, how much are they paying now? Is it like $2.21 or something? Is it some odd amount?
It was $2.21 up through December 31st of 2019.
Okay, so the $2.25 matches what Rootstown's currently paying for weekly service. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. So their counter does not include a requirement for a survey for subscription, from what I see. Is that correct, Bill? I don't see it. And they're agreeing to reduce services to bi-weekly versus weekly.
Well, they have been on, they have been on every other week service since February, March.
Yeah. But when I'm looking at Rootstown, we get it every week for $2.25.
And I had discussions with those trustees earlier in the year, and I'm probably going to circle back to them to discuss it again.
I mean, I, I think it's a fair counterproposal, seeing that they've removed the survey for subscription services. And it's the same rate that Rootstown's currently paying, which is, but they receive weekly pickup, and they went out, and they agreed to bi-weekly or every other week. How do you feel about this, Bill?
Well, I, let me back up. First of all, I had conversations with a Rootstown trustee back in 2019 about converting to every other week service. We did a survey, the residents agreed to it at 3.75, and then all of a sudden, the trustees backed out on what we had agreed to. As far as the $2.25 a month for Brimfield, I'm not recommending that because we've just raised rates in Manaway, Shalersville, and Atwater, and Suffield, and those communities will probably come back and say, why don't we get the same rate? We've told everybody where we need to be, and we look at increasing rates again next year to cover operational cost. So, you know, my recommendation is not to accept their offer.
Bill, when is Rootstown's contract up?
Uh, December 31st of next year, Vicky.
Okay.
And so there's still, we're still under $2.25 until then.
Well, we have a mechanism in there to negotiate rates. It would be the prosecutor's office would serve as the mediator. And I was told they were not interested in exploring that.
Yeah, it's my understanding that they're not going to. They want to stick to their contract of the $2.25.
Right.
Is the difference, Bill, Brimfield's contract was up and Rootstown's contract is not up?
That is correct. Although Franklin Township did agree to convert to every other week service, I believe in a contract term.
Is that, and how much are they paying, Bill?
They are at the $3 a month right now.
So if we don't come to an agreement, and Brimfield can, comes back to us once again and says, you know what, we turn those back over to the county, that means we'll get nothing until we can have our public hearings. Is that correct?
Well, no, that would just mean that we would just stop, we would discontinue services, what we put in the letter that we sent to them.
Mm-hmm. And I don't think that would be good. We need to try to find some way, I mean, this is only for a year. We have another community on the same rate that actually gets more services. I just would hate to see us have to stop recycling to Rootstown.
Or not to, I'm sorry, to Brimfield. Thankfully, I'm gonna jump in and disagree. I think that it's not us deciding to stop services, it's the Brimfield trustees. And I don't think we should enter into a contract that does not make us whole and does not pay for the services, especially as the county is entering into a difficult budget situation. We just can't sustain where we are subsidizing Brimfield's recycling. We need to get off that as much as possible as contracts expire, not try to go with old terms of contracts that are near the end of their expiration. So respectfully, I disagree with, with you, Sabrina, and think that we should move forward with the letter that was circulated in response rejecting the counteroffer.
Well, the only thing I would say, Kathleen, is it's been proven, the burden of recycling is not on the individual subdivisions, it's on the county. So Brimfield has already said they were done dealing with us months ago, and that's when we were going to try to have the public hearings to start the one plan. And unfortunately, no fault of our own, no fault of Brimfield Township trustees' fault, you know, COVID-19 hit, and we've been unable to do that. So in the meanwhile, I guess I see it differently because it really is going to come back, I think, to the commissioners. So, Bill, are you proposing to counter back to them for $3?
I'm, I'm just not countering. I, I'm just proposing to send the letter that you received this morning, sending that out today, if the board approves it. I think we've been fairly clear on where we need to be and what we've done. I think we've shown good faith over the last six months of providing a service at no cost. We just can't, we can't continue that.
But, but let's be fair, it's at no cost because of COVID-19, not because we weren't prepared to, to start charging.
Are we voting on this, Kathleen?
I don't know that this requires a vote. This is, this is the offer that we agreed to last week. We're just not agreeing to a counteroffer. And saying our offer still stands, we can't, we, we can't go with your counteroffer because it doesn't meet our service costs.
Yeah, but you know what, Kathleen, we have all these drop-offs that do not cover the cost.
And we need to fix that, not further it by agreeing something that doesn't meet the cost. And we hope to be able to do that.
But when you're talking about an extension of a contract, which was originally the purpose, and even though, as I stated last week, it was not an extension, um, you know, we're going to end up not providing a service, and we're going to end up, you know, not being able to recover any of our losses.
I think that we could vote to reject the count, I'm not sure what the correct move is here, unfortunately. I mean, I'd like to move this along. I think that we, I think we should send the letter. I don't know if we needed to take a vote to send the letter rejecting the counteroffer.
Well, Kathleen, didn't we put that in the letter last, last time, what we were going to do?
Yes.
And we all voted on that, correct?
Yeah, to send the letter to them, but then they had until the 26th to respond to us.
But they want us to respond to them first, to see if we accept their offer, their count, and we're not accepting it.
Well,
Right.
You're not accepting it. I would accept it. So I just think, you know, it's getting into the politics of this whole thing, and who in the end is really going to pay for it? And that is going to be the citizens of Brimfield Township. And if Brimfield walks from this, what's, you know, other people could as well.
Other people are under contract. They're not under contract. That's why we're in this situation with them.
Well, there's, isn't there several other ones that are coming up too, Bill?
We have, the vast majority of them are in 2024. We have one, we have 1, 2, 3, and 2021. So, and then 2022, 2023.
19 has renewed. Because I know Brimfield wasn't the only one.
I, you know what, you cut out, I missed the vast majority.
I said, everyone that expired at the end of 19 has renewed a contract?
No. Wow, wait a minute, let me look. Just the drop-offs, Charleston, Deerfield, Edinburgh, and Palmyra. Those are all drop-offs.
Let me try to move the discussion along this way. I'm not sure if, if this is procedurally correct, but I, I will make a motion to authorize Bill to send the letter rejecting the counteroffer, but leaving our offer open as the letter states. Roll call, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Hey, Amy.
Yes.
Yes.
Sabrina?
Amy, I'm having problems. It's not.
Is it working now? Can you hear us?
Sabrina?
Your video's okay, we can see you. Is it the audio you're having trouble with?
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me, Amy?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
Why don't you hang up and dial back in? Amy, are you in the office with Sabrina?
Yes.
Can you ask her, we won't, we'll pause, we'll stand at ease, ask her to dial back in?
Hey, Amy. Yeah, you know what, I can see people, I just can't hear them.
Kathleen asked if you'd go out and come back in.
Okay. Yeah, that's weird.
Sorry.
So what?
Is she doing wireless, do we know, or data, or?
I think she's still on wireless.
Yeah.
We'll have to see if we can find a laptop and actually put her in the network.
Yeah, that's why I didn't even come in that one time. I was going to do it from the office, because I just thought it would be tricky.
Okay, she's trying again.
Okay.
I just promoted her, so, to a panelist, so she should be in.
Okay, we get a promotion from you, Jean?
It's a term.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed the motion, Kathleen, could you please repeat that?
Yes, so I'll make a motion to authorize Bill to send a letter rejecting the counteroffer, but leaving our offer open as stated in the letter.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Um, yes.
Okay. Bill, thank you very much.
Have a good day. So the letter, the letter as presented to the board, send it?
Yes.
Okay, I will do that as soon as I log off. Have a great day, everybody, and get outside and enjoy this wonderful weather. Thank you.
Try, thanks, Bill.
You're welcome. Bye.
Do we have a motion to adjourn solid waste?
I'll move. I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. All right, let's reconvene our general session, and we will start with HR. And we'll have to wait to bring Janet in. Or wait for her to call in, I'm not sure which.
I see her name. I don't see.
Oh, do you?
I see her name, but I don't see her.
Give to promote Janet, Jean?
She's in. She is, she is promoted.
Okay.
She just maybe hasn't checked to unmute in video.
Can you hear us, Janet?
Okay, so you can, okay, I can, I can hear you guys and see you.
Okay, I can see you and hear you now, too.
Okay.
You are up.
All right, I just have the appreciation gift ideas on my agenda. This is when we started the employee appreciation luncheon five years ago, we had purchased tumblers with the Portage County logo to give to everyone as recognition gifts for those that were celebrating 25 years or more of service. Well, now, now, everybody's reaching the 30-year anniversary this year. So obviously, we don't want to give them another tumbler. So we have five, five employees that have reached the 30-year anniversary. So we were just trying to find some different ideas on what we could give those individuals. We actually have five employees celebrating a 30th anniversary now, or this year, and then next year we'll have 10, and then in 2022, we'll have five. So we do have about, you know, 20 employees celebrating a 30th anniversary in the next couple of years. So I, Jenna, Jenna went on Amazon and searched for different gift ideas, and that's what you have in your packet. We also checked, the very first one, we had actually checked with Sports Express, because we were just trying to think of, obviously because of budget constraints, you know, and we do have a budget for these recognition gifts in, in the HR budget. But we actually checked with Sports Express, because we were wondering, perhaps maybe a, a cooler with the Portage County logo might be a good idea. So that is one of the ideas that you'll see in your packets, and it is from Sports Express, but you'll see, you'll see.
Is that local, Janet?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And Ravenna?
And that's, and that's, that's another good thing, is that we would actually be supporting a local business. Yeah, Sports Express is right here in Ravenna.
Yeah.
And they've, they have our Portage County logo, and they do a lot of business for us. So we actually save money with that, because there's no setup fee, because they have our logo already. And actually, they, they're looking for, they're trying to find even a better deal for us right now. But they did find the cooler that you see in your packets. This is like, if we get a single color, the logo would be, single color would be $12. If we get a multi-color, which would probably look like the, the logo on our letterhead, that would be them ordered, and that would be the $14. So he, he, he is trying to find a better deal for us, but right now, with that particular cooler, it'd either be 12 to $14. And quite honestly, if we, if we bought all 20, I mean, that's roughly two, I mean, I don't, I didn't figure the tax or anything, but that'd be roughly, you know, $280, which we do have it in our budget, so that would at least cover the next three years of these employees reaching 30th anniversary. So, but that's just one, that's just one idea. I don't know how you guys feel about any of these other ideas.
Well, I personally like the first one the best, not only because it's local, because it's very practical.
Right.
Yeah. And it's real practical, too.
Right, yeah, absolutely. And that's the one that Jen and I liked the most, too.
I agree.
Yeah, do you want to go with that one?
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Okay, we'll work with Sports Express and get that order going. And then, like, I sent the email out last week about the employee luncheon, but we'll follow up with everybody, like, who's everybody that's celebrating the anniversary, just so we all know. And then again, everybody will receive a certificate for their milestone anniversaries. That'd be the 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, and 30. And then, the 25 years would still get the tumbler, and then the 30 years would, you know, get, get the cooler then. But we'll, we'll start that then. We'll get on the process.
Sounds good.
Okay.
The, the other journal entries, are they standard, or do you need to say anything about those, Janet?
No, these, these are actually standard. And I believe, I, I think, and I, I didn't hear Kelly Jo's meeting last week, but I, I think perhaps you might have talked about the first two JEs with her last week. I'm 100% sure, because I wasn't on the call with her, but, um, but they're, they're, they're standard, though.
Okay, you know what, Janet, what, can you explain to me what number two is exactly?
Number two, that is the JFS wage policy that Kelly Jo, I don't know if it was effective in, I don't know if it was effective in 18 or 19, but that's the JFS policy that has longevity.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yeah, so she, I, I want to say it was eight, 2018?
It was 2019.
What's it, 2019? Okay, because I couldn't remember which one. So that's, that's their longevity schedule for their non-bargaining. Bargaining has it in their contract, but non-bargaining now has this, now has the policy. And so we're, we're suspending that only because of the, just the budget constraints, because of the COVID-19. And Kelly Jo is aware of this.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agree to authorize a wage increase for Eric Metz, Clinical Services Manager for Portage County Job and Family Services, due to successfully completing the 120-day probationary period effective July 7th, 2020.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agree to suspend JFS wage policy 010-23 until further notice due to budget uncertainties in the face of the COVID-19 pandemic.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agree to approve leave without pay for a JFS employee through June 12, 2020.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Thanks, Deanna.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sue, are you there?
I'm here. I couldn't get the video to work today. I tried a couple of different web IDs, and it just wouldn't work for me, so I had to call in.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I know that Joanne was having trouble, too, because she emailed me and said that she couldn't get hers to work either. So I don't know which, what part of the agenda she's in, but in case she's, she might be in the same boat. Okay, so my first resolution is our normal transfer for the 34% match for our 4D contract payments that were made in May. This was for the juvenile court April services, and it's in the amount of $1,650.75 from the general fund to our child support fund.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to transfer 1,650.75 from Fund 0001, General Fund, 1414, Child Support Administration.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the second one is our regular monthly shared fund transfer from our child support fund to our public assistance fund to pay for their shared, they're part of the shared costs in the public assistance fund, and it is for the month of May, 2020. costs in the public assistance fund, and it is for the month of May 2020 in the amount of $30,002,1339.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to transfer $30,000 to 13.39 from Fund 1414, Child Support Administration, to 1410, Public Assistance Fund.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Okay, and then number three is a donation list that, you know, as we were moving out of the annex into the admin building, there were a lot of items that were obsolete that we are, couldn't use anymore. Things that, old suitcases that had been donated to us that really were not in very good shape and those kind of items that we would like to donate to the Portage, local Portage County shelters. Total amount of, we valued them as best we could. The total value was $810.
Move that the Board of Commissioners declares obsolete and authorize the donation of Portage County Job and Family Services property to Portage County shelters.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then the fourth item is, Kelly Jo spoke to you about this back in May, but we just somehow missed the step of doing the resolution for it. So this is a resolution to include the Summer Youth Employment Program. In the PRC plan, we received additional money, $174,000 combination of Summer Youth Employment Program and COVID-19 funds to cover this. So we just wanted to present this for a resolution to amend the PRC plan to include these services.
Move that the Board of Commissioners approves the revised prevention, retention, and contingency plan effective May 5, 2020, for Portage County Job and Family Services.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
All right, that's all for me.
Thanks, Sue.
Thanks, Sue.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
I've resent Joanne, the same invite that Bill used to get in. I'm just wondering if it's not working inside the network because he was from outside the network.
Huh. Okay.
You have any ideas, Shannon? Make a difference. Mr. Braggs here. If we'd like to wait and reach out to Joanne, or I can see if I can grab her right now.
Let's try to get the link on.
I just tried to call Joanne. She's not answering, so I don't know if she went to a different computer, but let me see. I don't see Todd here.
You don't on yours. As a host, you get all the attendees in waiting, in the waiting room.
Oh, okay.
This is Joanne Towns. Is not available to take. You reached Shannon Katsa, Portage County.
Shannon's not answering either. And Joanne's not answering.
Hello?
Hey, Joanne. Hey, can, can you not get in?
Nope.
Jean.
I've been fine for like 10 minutes.
Jean just sent you a new invitation. Have you tried to get in on that?
Shannon's not answering either. I will try. This is all, um, I'll try this one. I, yeah, I'll hang up with you and try it again.
Okay.
Oh, are you there?
Okay, bye. Joanne's going to hang up and try to call in. Get audio working.
No, oh, that was Janet Coback. Uh, Joanne Towns.
Hello?
Joanne.
Hi.
Anybody there?
Hi, Joanne.
Hey. All right. On my agenda, the first thing I had was discussion on the DD bid results. And I sent you all a resolution yesterday afternoon after the bid opening, the auction. So what I would like you to be able to do is pass this today so that we can get moving on the sales agreement. The bidder has their financing all in, ready to go with their banker.
You know, Joanne, I got your email, but I neglected to print that resolution. I guess I didn't, I didn't know that you had an attachment there. I didn't notice it. So I don't have that resolution. Do you, Sabrina Kathleen, do you have it?
You, you know what? I don't remember. I don't know if I did either, to be honest.
Do you have it?
Yeah, I have it.
Maybe you could read that, then. Because I got the details in the email.
Oh, actually, I got it. Yeah, I found it. I'll make a motion to award the sale of real property owned by the Portage County known as 7008 State Route 88, Ravenna, Ohio. Second.
Uh, Joanne, did the prosecutor review the resolution?
I don't see her anymore.
She's gone, yeah. Jean, do you see her anywhere?
No.
Oh, that's Todd.
Can you see me?
No. Well, we can see you on the screen, but we can't physically see you. But we normally don't.
You can hear me, though.
Yeah.
So the wrong links were sent out. I just had to close out of my other computer because I don't have a microphone on it. And at that, at the same time I did that is when Joanne cut out. So I'm not sure what's going on. But I can't get in by phone. The password that was sent was incorrect. So if I, I don't know how long I'm going to last on here. This is my computer. That had been cutting out after around five minutes. I need a password to be able to call in.
I thought I said that.
Todd, I just sent you the link that I think Joanne used to get in. And then for whatever reason, she disconnected. Should be in your email basket right now.
Yeah, let me try calling in with that.
How did you get in?
Well, Amy had sent us a Zoom meeting, and the link in that was correct. She sent a second email reminder or something, and the link in that had an invalid meeting ID. There was then another automatic email, and if you log into that, it says the meeting is still waiting. It was scheduled to start at nine. So we got three different meeting IDs coming to us. And the only one that worked was the one that did come with a password for me.
All right.
Sorry, that's my fault.
Well, we spent a lot of time testing the network.
Well, it, I'm not sure why those three different ones came with different IDs. That was the issue. And did, did Shannon ever, or Sue ever get in?
Yeah.
Okay.
She called in, though.
Well, I wonder what.
Are you going to try and dial in while we have this connection, too?
I'm trying now. It's telling me that something's wrong, but I'll try again.
ID followed by town. Otherwise, please enter the meeting password followed by. You have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted throughout the meeting.
So do you?
You have to turn one of them off.
Now he's gone. Joanne's back on.
That's everybody. So the one I sent Todd is the correct one. We'll have to go back and figure out where, where the wrong ones came from.
All right, so Joanne's here now?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, all right.
You better make us snappy.
I think you cut out right as I was asking if the prosecutor had reviewed the resolution.
Uh, no, I didn't give it to him. He was, he was there at the meeting, I mean, at the, at the auction with me. I don't generally have him review them, but if you want me to send it up to him, I can.
Only because this is an unusual transaction that he's been involved in?
Okay. Got its way.
You might, my guess is he'll get back quickly, Joanne. So could you just let us know when that is and we could potentially still move that today?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, Joanne, let him know that we're wanting to move that today.
Oh, I think, well, that's why I attached the resolution yesterday so that we could do it. I, I, in my, in my email, I said I attached the resolution for tomorrow because I knew that the Board of DD was meeting last night to get it done on their side. So it's okay. We'll see when he gets back to me.
Thanks, Joanne.
Okay.
Um, sure. The next, the first resolution I have then is with Dixie Benchoff. It's a, an amendment number one for domestic relations. They are, they had to make some changes because of the COVID, and she had to do some online things. And they just wanted to memorialize it in an amendment.
Okay.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into amendment number one between the Portage County Board of Commissioners, Portage County Common Free Sport Domestic Relations Division, and Dixie L. Benchoff, Ph.D., to provide professional services.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
The next one is a licensed agreement to use our property on Coit Road, the training facility for the SEAL SWAT team.
Where.
May I ask?
Go ahead.
Joanne, on that one, where, where are they from?
Where are they located?
Yeah.
Their agreement does not state their address. No, they don't have their address in the, it just says they're the licensee, the SEAL SWAT team. This came from the Sheriff's Department. The team can enter authorized participating cities. No, it doesn't say.
Okay.
That generally isn't in our, in our, it, it isn't in the actual agreement. But we, you can hold on it if you'd like to, and I can ask that question.
I think it's okay to go ahead. Usually, it would be obvious from the name of the department, but this one just kind of threw me, like, who, who is this? But I'm okay moving forward.
Okay, move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into license agreement between the Portage County Commissioners and the SEAL SWAT team.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
The third resolution is actually what I consider a trade-in of equipment on a new piece of equipment for the Sheriff's Department. Paying for it out of their commissary fund. They're trying to get a loader, four-by-four loader to use out there for the trustees that do work outside of the jail. And all of these items are obsolete, according to them. They're trading them in, and that they're getting $16,000 towards the purchase price. And the purchase price then will be reduced to $2,350. They're buying it from a local dealer, White Supply and Atwater.
Move that the Board of Commissioners declares obsolete and unfit Portage County personal property and authorize the disposal of the items.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Okay, number four is an emergency declaration regarding credit card usage during the state of emergency for COVID. The Auditor of State just came out with letting us know that as long as we're buying PPE, they're going to relax the control on credit cards and let us actually buy supplies or materials that we need with the credit card that are normally not able to be used for that. They they wanted a, you know, kind of timeframe on it, and it's going, we're able to start it when the very first declaration was done. And then what I did is I put in here that it'll be good until the emerg, state of emergency is lifted everywhere, and then we'll go back to the normal restrictions. But I'm very happy to find out that they relaxed that because it makes it a lot easier to get some things that you can't use a purchase order for.
Move that the Board of Commissioners authorizes an emergency declaration regarding credit card usage during the state of emergency due to COVID-19.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, next is an amendment number six for correctional health care. This is the company that does our inmate health medical services at the jail. The Sheriff's Office did not want to rebid out the. The Sheriff's Office did not want to rebid out this year. They wanted to do one more, one more year extension on the contract. So that's what we did. And it, they included the rise in the potential of inmates there, obviously. And my hope is, is that with the new sheriff coming in, that we will go out and bid for this again next year. Because I think it's time. We don't, sometimes when you get complacent with the same company and prices just rise and, you know, it's time to go out for bid. So this will just renew them until April of next year, April 30th of next year.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into amendment number six between the Board of Commissioners and Correctional Healthcare Companies, LLC, for inmate healthcare services.
Okay, I will second.
Call Amy.
Vicki?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the last one is the agreement, Jim Wilkins agreed to a two-year term at the same terms. And this is just the resolution to go into agreement for negotiating purposes that he provides to you.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into agreement for professional services between the Fortage County Board of Commissioners and James P. Wilkins, Attorney.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna try to get ahold of Chris by phone.
Okay.
And see if he can read that and then I will. Sabrina, you're in the office?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'll call up to you and let you know because I think if I try to email it or something, it may not come through to you guys. All right?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Uh huh.
God. Are you there?
Yes, you guys ready?
Yep.
And did you get my bill review?
Yes.
Yes.
Nothing out of the ordinary there. The, the actual bill review you can see is around a million dollars, which is higher than it has been, but that's more normal with what we usually see. And we had one late fee. That was the $15.78 late fee, but otherwise nothing out of the ordinary in any of the lines.
Well, are we gonna do the resolutions first or talk about the tax budget?
I'd recommend resolutions just so we get them. I don't know who's after me.
Okay. Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, June 18, 2020 bills ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, June 18, 2020 wire transfers for health benefits as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, June 18, 2020 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, June 18, 2020 then announce certification as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners approves the President of the Fortage County Board of Commissioners, Catholic, apply to sign a letter authorizing Todd Bragg as the individual having authority to discuss the details of an annuity that was set up from Mr. Frederick E. Farr at the Athene Annuity and Life Company.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners approves the fulfilling of the requirements of Ohio Senate Bill 310 for the passage of a resolution in order to receive and expand federal funds under section 5001 of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, Economic Security Act.
Okay, I will second.
Todd, can you give us an update on this or just some, some more information?
Yeah, the House passed it, I think it's, I have the number written. I don't know anymore. It's way, signature from the governor. What will happen, this resolution needs to go to Janet Esposito and to the Office of Budget and Management at the state. Once the governor signs the law, excuse me, the state is going to distribute to each county auditor, the county's allocation. The auditor is going to hold that in a holding fund until each of the local jurisdictions within that county apply to the budget commission for the funding. And then as you apply, you will get the local government share that we had agreed to distributed from that main fund. If somebody doesn't apply and there is an additional funds left over, that can then be redistributed to all those who had applied. I don't think we'll get to that point, but that's what it is. The good news is it does still appear that the CARES fund can be used as a match on the public assistance funds. So any eligible expense will basically be covered 100% between the two.
Right. All right, do we have a second on that? I'm sorry.
We did. Yeah.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicki?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we going to the miscellaneous items or the tax budget?
Let's see the tax budget.
This is a rough draft that we put on just to give the boards a head up to see if you had questions. Next week, we'll finalize this. I don't expect many changes, to be honest, just little tidbits as I find them. But next week, we will ask the board for the draft that we send to be put on public display. That will have to be on public display for 10 days. And then that second Thursday in July, we'll actually pass it. Actually, I think it's the second Thursday. Anyway, that'll, then we'll formally pass the tax budget. So this is just kind of a heads up to see if the commissioners had any questions, changes you would like. Probably the most important line on that whole document is line 14, where we are requesting certification for $51,493,649.
You know, Todd, what is that refunds and reimbursements? In the receipts?
Um, that's, it's a miscellaneous category. There's a lot that goes into that. Basically, they come in $200 and $300 at a time, sometimes $10 and $15. That's any time money is returned to the county for overpayment. If we overpaid a vendor, sometimes we build up a credit and then they reissue a check to us. That all goes into there.
What happened in 2018? I know we've probably discussed this since it's such a big number, but.
I'd have to put that one, but I suspect that that might be the Board of Elections.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So I see it keeps coming down and then 21, you're really not expecting.
Yeah, we usually don't count off anything for that. But we do always get, as you can see, we always get some, again, on certification, we're very conservative and so, you know, generally that we always receive around 50,000 to 100,000. We're asking for 37,000. You can see the last three years, we've cleared that easily.
Okay. And the other expenses on line 25, we've got $50,000. That's quite a bit lower. That's a good thing, but what?
So that $320,000 is the finishing of the contract for the architect and the business manager on the jail. And so next, or, and in reality, that $50,000 is kind of a placeholder. I assume we'll do a roof or a parking lot or a something. So at least we're holding that for now.
Okay. When those, a couple of the courts, it was lower for 21. I was, they must have cut some expenses or something, huh?
Yeah. And we'll, we'll see if that continues into the, you know, August and September, but
Right.
it is, the people are making efforts.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised, Todd, under the corner, for, where was it? Hold on, never mind. I looked at the line wrong. Never mind.
Todd, how come on the receipts there are not decreases in what we're expecting to receive in line of
Property taxes?
Yeah, I mean, in general, and local, local government, sales tax. I, I just expected to see the numbers to be lower based on estimates that we are talking about.
So the, the 2020 estimates are also a little bit reduced from the normal. Some of that, for example, the coronavirus on the sales tax is going to start affecting our June collections.
Okay.
And that will probably continue into, you know, January and February, but then presumably we'd be climbing back up. So if you kind of draw that U, half of the losses in 2020, half of the losses in 2021. So that is why the estimate and the request are fairly similar. That goes with the casino tax. That goes with local government fund as well. So that's part of why that happened. You'll notice the total receipts, we're only asking for the 41,493. And a lot, a lot of that comes in with our cash balance. So it is lower than what we have requested in the past.
Okay, Todd, where's the 41,493? I got lost here.
I'm sorry, line 1451.
Okay, okay, all right.
Here's we had, you know, I think last year we asked for $54,200,000 or so, and then we got certifications. And, and we're, our ask, our ask for certification is always conservative compared to what we really expect. So that's part of why we may be closer to actual in our request now than we ever have been. Meaning there won't be as much of a push in between actual and certification. But like even this year, we only asked for $21 million in sales tax, even though we were expecting around 22, 22 and a half. So a lot of the reduction in what we view as our actual doesn't necessarily need to be taken off the certification.
Okay. Okay.
On the balance on, on line two.
Yes.
Can you talk about the, the six, I mean, the $6 million decrease?
Yeah, and that's probably, again, on the conservative side. When Gene sent out his letter, he had said between three and six million. And you'll notice if, if the worst case comes to pass, we may indeed experience a $6 million decrease in our cash, which is what this is modeling right now. I would hope, and, and again, that, that assumes, my forecast currently assumes all things are staying the same because there really haven't been changes yet. But, you know, departments are working to reduce costs even as we speak, so that should not come to pass. But it, that would be the worst case if we didn't do anything.
Okay. Yeah, on page three, line 115, that was quite staggering, I felt. From 6, 6.6 million to 615,000.
Yes, and again, that would, that would be if all things stay the same right now.
Right.
That's where we could, could get to. You know, before, 4 million is kind of our minimum. When we start getting into 3 million, it begins impacting the county's ability to function. We have months, particularly the months where we have, let's say, free payrolls, where our cash balance can fluctuate 2 and a half, 3 million. And so if our cash balance is only at 3 million to begin with, that starts making it, you know, uncomfortably close in terms of being able to pay bills. So usually we like to see that reserve at a minimum of 400. And that would not include any type of contingency or anything. 6 million is a more comfortable reserve for a county of our size. And that, you know, operating and contingency. And then you add on to there if you want to do projects, you know, you're saving up and whatnot. So even that 6 million for this year, if we would get to there, starts to border on the minimum of what we'd like to see available.
This is kind of minor, Todd, but for the, give me a second. For, for the Board of Elections, I would think that there would be a diff, a bigger difference between the presidential and non-presidential year. I mean, 2020 is a high mark for them.
Yeah, and some of their figures were much lower on, on their request. I'll have to go through again and see what, where the biggest, where the, where the difference comes in and that it added on because, for example, for their, what do you call the poll workers and whatnot, they did indeed reduce those budgets. But then some of their overtime and whatnot went up as well. I don't know if they're aware of something. But yeah, normally we would see a bigger decrease. But that, that is their current request. I don't modify the request.
So Todd, can you, can you explain this week versus like what next week? Like what is the process?
Well, you'll recall, we had the due line, deadline for people by a week. So I've only had one week to go through this data. So this is kind of my best rough, rough estimate rushing it through. I still have the non-general fund. I probably won't have that finished. My goal was Monday. I'm not sure I'm gonna make that. Certainly, I hope to have it done by Tuesday so that you guys can at least look at it ahead of time. But as I do the non-general fund, sometimes things pop up. You know, a transfer that's needed or whatnot that somebody forgot to budget. And then I also go through our own numbers. I make sure that everybody really did do 6% on the health benefits. I haven't even double-checked that yet. Sometimes people try to do 6%, their calculations are a little bit strange. You know, minor things like that, that I'm still gonna try and go through and get adjusted. The reality is, I think the 51,493,649 ask for certification is a pretty good number and it's a workable number into October and November. So I don't think I'll change too, too much, but that could be what happens.
And then, Todd, could you just help me understand the, the different sections here, the 01 and then 02 and 03?
Yes.
What to look for?
001, that is like what we refer to as our general fund. And, and that's the main, obviously you'll see the main use. The 002 was the additional quarter percent. And that, the, the collection from people shopping ends December 31st. But because we're three months behind, we'll still get three months' worth of. But because we're three months behind, we'll still get three months' worth of remissions. And so that's why you'll see in that zero, 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 two for twenty twenty one, we do still get a little bit of revenue coming in. Basically, that's October, November, and December of twenty twenty collections, you know, that people paid at the stores. That will end, which is why you see zeros across, you know, the adult probation, the sheriff. Of course, if you go up above and you look at the sheriff's request, his request jumps up by two million, basically moving these expenditures up to there. But by the end of next year for sure, and in fact, probably by May or June, zero, zero, two will be zero and then no longer used. And then zero, zero, three, when the state changed the medical, medic, Medicaid, whatever it was, taxes. And they altered the way that things were allowed to be collected, and actually, it was the federal government coming to the state saying, you're doing it wrong. So the state had to alter how those were collected, and that actually caused us a loss of revenue in twenty, the end of twenty eighteen, early twenty nineteen, the state gave a one-time allocation to help counties manage through that. The commissioners at the time said, let's, well, the money had to go into this fund, but they said, let's reserve this money for the dam, the Pretty Glen Dam, since that also came right around the same time. And that way, whether we were ordered or whether we could do it on our own, it wouldn't come as a shock to our normal operations. And so we have continued to leave that money in zero, 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 three until we would proceed with the dam. Earlier this month, you guys put the dam on hold with the possibility that we may spend this money. And so this money is indeed available for, for any expenditure by the county. But the reason it has just sat here all this time was because there was an intention, the dam happened to come in around, you know, one point six, one point eight. We happen to have one point eight here, so we were gonna save it for the dam and then spend the balance once the dam. And basically, those three make up now what we call the total general fund. Although, when, when we talk in, as a county and say, general fund, we almost always mean zero, 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 one.
So is there a total of all of these funds, or are they done, are they certified separately?
They're certified separately.
Okay, and so what's the certification? What are the number, the key numbers? Is it on the oh, 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 two, is it forty six or four point six million?
Yeah, four, six, nine, ten, nine hundred ninety three.
And then one point eight?
Right, because we're, nothing occurring within that fund. But of that four, in the zero, zero, two, that money really is all spent. That's, that's to finish out encumbrances on the jail, that type of thing. So that, that certification there will only be to return the cash advance and finish payments on the jail. There will be a little bit left in that fund, although I hesitate to hazard a guess now because of the coronavirus losses and whatnot. We'll just sort of have to wait and see. But that was always our intention. We're basically done with the quarter percent sales tax until the jail is finished.
So, Todd, back to oh, one. And the sheriff's budget. So the sheriff. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this looks like the sheriff has put in for a close to a two million dollar increase.
Yeah, although a, a million of that, well, eight, eight hundred fifty thousand of that or so was always sitting in that zero, zero, two fund. So he's just moving it up to that. So it's, it's not actually an increase in like personnel and whatnot from what he has right now. And I, I've been saying for five years now, we needed to decide how we were gonna handle that extra road patrol that was put in. You know, he's come to rely on that for everyday operations. And the original commissioner's intent was that it would only exist while the sales tax existed. And that was kind of the incentive to, you know, give everyone a little something, so to speak, if it ever went to ballot. At least we could say, well, everyone was getting a little bit more security a, as a result of this opioid epidemic. But again, that, that money is now being rolled into here because that quarter percent is gone. And like I said, the sheriff doesn't feel that that is really additional service, as he's made clear over the years. Even with that additional money, he is struggling to, to provide, you know, what he feels is adequate service.
So his personnel expenses, he's not asking for an increase, he's just combining.
There is a raise there, and I, I can sort that out for you and email it to you. I, I may have to get ahold of Ron. But yeah, I, there isn't a lot of additional personnel in there. I think they're still asking for the jail administrator. Jean, do you recall if they sent a letter yet detailing their? Yeah, I think a lot of what I'm pulling out here is just vague conversation, so I better watch, because they may have just been speaking, you know, off the top of their head. I'll get ahold of Ron to detail exactly that, but like I said, almost a million, probably around eight hundred fifty, nine hundred thousand of that is just the zero, 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 two people moving into the zero, 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 one fund. But that, that end of the expenditures, we would have until even November to hash out. You know, this is just their current request.
Todd, would it be possible to get more detail than this? I understand you're scrambling because of the additional week. So, you know, it's, it's helpful to have this right now, but I mean, is it possible, like, I mean, even on the sheriff, to have a fourteen million dollar, a seventeen million dollar budget just broken down into two lines? Is it would be, I think, helpful to have more information.
Right, I can, I can provide you as much detail as you want. Again, on the tax budget, it's generally understood, you're not approving expenses in any way. These are simply what departments have requested that they feel are needed for operations. We would still need to go through the August, September meetings and discussions before we reach an actual appropriation. But I, I can give you their detail. But the, the actual debate on that should occur over August and September, where we can have meetings with the sheriff and really get into the detail. I, I can't get you that detail yet. You know, your letter, when you sent it out, did request that each entity provide you with reasons for any changes in their budgets, and some departments did do that, but again, the sheriff was not one that sent that. I can see if Ron has that ready and at least get you that. But the most important thing for the tax budget is what we're asking to be certified, and the fact that we do have requests for expenditure that meet those funds we're requesting, and we at least do show that.
Right, I think that it would be helpful to have that information, even though this is a process that is, is not passing our budget. But I, I just think having more information sooner would be helpful, especially as. Yeah, go ahead.
Like we do with one sheet for everyone for each line? Similar to what we sort of do in September and October. And do you want the prior years on there? Yeah, I can get that, I can get that breakout very, very quickly. I mean, that's just a matter of sorting the data a different way. In terms of, though, knowing, well, this, this line went up by a hundred thousand, why? That's what the letter from the officials were supposed to address, you know, similar like what Brad did, where he breaks out each line and says why he went up or down. I, I don't know, I think we only received five or six from the various departments. That level of detail I don't have right now. I would need to get from Ron Ross. And I don't know that I'll have that in time, but I will get you whatever he gives me as soon as he does.
Could we also get a packet of that type of correspondence or whatever has been submitted?
Yeah, I believe Amy sent that out a week or two ago. Of the correspondences that we had received. Am I, am I, did that only come to me and Jean, Amy? I thought it went to the commissioners. We'll, we'll find that down, forward it to you.
I, I feel like I get it a little bit piecemeal, because some people send it to us, but it'd be helpful to have that packet.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll find that. Like I said, I thought Amy had sent out an email after the due date of all the ones that we had received. Maybe it only came to me or Jean, but we'll forward you that, that had everyone, and then I can send you the breakout in detail. Are you gonna want that detail for the non-general as well?
I think that'd be helpful.
Okay. Yes, I will get that for you. The, this, this general fund, I can have you the detail this afternoon, if not tomorrow morning. Again, the general, the non-general funds will probably be, be closer to mid to late Tuesday right now.
Okay, that's okay, Todd, I understand. I just think that'll be helpful. So next week is a date that we need to do a resolution?
No, well, yeah, you do a resolution. No, I don't think you do. I think you just do a journal entry, authorizing it to be put on public display. And we do need to decide how we're going to achieve public display. My recommendation was stick a table in the vestibule and have those doors, the first set of doors open from eight to five, or eight to four thirty, whatever we want to do, and include that in the advertisement. A website is not considered public display. It has to be on the auditor's counter, which I assume she will do by appointment, as she currently is doing with all her business. So either we have to have it on our counter, in which case we're gonna have to have someone manned in order to take appointments. Or, again, my, my thought is to put it in that vestibule so that people can come in. We just need to have it posted clearly that that is where it's at. That needs to occur for ten days. And then, as we get to passage, we can still make changes. But we can't talk about it until the day of the public hearing. During the public hearing, I bring forward to you any changes either from the public or myself, and then we actually pass the tax budget on that July meeting. So all that will happen next week is a journal entry to display it, and basically, that's you acknowledging that you are satisfied with what's being displayed. And then two weeks later, we actually pass it. So we still have three weeks to make changes if we need to, any aspect.
I would think we could display it on the website anyway, even though that may not meet.
Yeah, we always do, we always do. Legal requirement, and that's why the website doesn't count, you know, for whatever reason, the state doesn't recognize that.
Todd, you might want to double-check that this wouldn't be included in the temporary law that the state passed for public meetings.
And that's a good question. I sent Chris an email. I wasn't aware there was any caveat to that, but I'll double-check with him, because maybe there is other things circulating as everybody's tax budgets are coming due here. That by law, it has to be on the auditor's counter and on the commissioners, displayed by the commissioners. But how, how we occasionally can change.
That's temporarily loosened a little bit.
Yeah, I'll check with Chris and let you know what he responds.
Todd, one more thing on, on the receipts. Can that be broken out more like line?
Absolutely.
For example, you know, like what the different taxes? Breakdown on the amounts and, and your projections.
Do you want that by department, or do you want it as a separate revenue document? So, for example, I could give you by department what they think their revenues are gonna be and what they think their expenses are gonna be. Or I could give you just the expense detail in one document and just the revenue detail in another document.
I think having it by department would be helpful. And then also, and, oh, just an overall like on this lines four through thirteen, just having some overall breakdown.
Right, so include those revenue detail in the departments and a separate document that summarizes it all together.
I think that's helpful, especially if we're talking to departments about making cuts and just having a full picture of like, okay, well, this is it, it's just easier, I feel like, to talk to them when you have the full picture of, okay, here's what's coming in, you know, we're not trying to hide anything, we're trying to get, get us all through this.
Right, right.
So yes, shorter answer. Thank you, Todd, that's very helpful.
Thanks, Todd. Thanks, Todd.
Talk to you later.
Bye.
Let me get out of here before they ask me for anything else. All right, the miscellaneous stuff. Will you give me a minute to dig it out? I, I think my packet got messed up.
You know, on both of these resolutions, I don't see the person's name on the, on the sheet that we got, like from Parta and from the library. Which supposedly appointing them for an additional term, but I don't see their name on there unless I'm not looking.
On your agenda? On the resolution?
Well, no, we, we've got attached here, like the Portage area, Regional Transportation Authority, part of all the members, when their term expires. And like for the first one, I don't see Richard Brockett on there, and on the second one, I can see the lady.
He's on there, Vicky, but it's highlighted and it sort of like blackens it out.
You know what, I, okay.
It blackens it out.
Okay, I couldn't read it. That's why I didn't think it was on there. Probably the same thing with the lady with the library. Okay, gotcha. That was just confusing to me, okay.
All right, let's do you want to start with the, the meeting minutes?
Oh, sorry, Kathleen. Move that the Board of Commissioners approves the June eleven, twenty twenty regular meeting minutes.
A second?
Roll call, Amy.
Yes.
Yes, I'm gonna ask that we hold on, on these two appointment resolutions. I just want to discuss this a little bit more with Judy, and we're okay on timing if we do it by the end of the month. So I'm gonna pull both of those.
And you know what, Kathleen, Joanne did call back, so we can add the resolution for the Board of DD.
Okay, can we remove, can we re?
Okay, I'll make a motion toward the sale of real property owned by Portage County, known as seven, zero, zero, eight, State Route eighty-eight, Ravenna, Ohio.
Second.
Roll call, Amy.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, back to miscellaneous with the journal entries.
Move in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, section three, two, five, point, zero, seven, the Board of Commissioners acknowledged receipt of the monthly record of proceedings. of the monthly record of proceedings and transactions for May twenty twenty, as presented by the County, Portage County Sheriff's Department.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Yes.
Move in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code Section three two five point zero seven, the Board of Commissioners acknowledged receipt of the transporting report for April and May twenty twenty, as presented by the Portage County Sheriff's Department.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners acknowledged the receipt of the Portage County Investment Reconciliation for the month of May twenty twenty, received on June twelfth, twenty twenty, as presented by the County Auditor and County Treasurer.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners authorizes the change in the designation of a parcel to be considered linear transportation right-of-way to allow the removal of all future stormwater fee assessments as requested by the County Engineers Office for the following parcel. Parcel number eighteen dash zero four five dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero two five dash zero 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 Freedom Township Trustees. The Board further authorizes reimbursement of the overpayment of stormwater utility fees from the last billing period in accordance with Resolution number zero nine dash zero eight three five, Section seven, as follows. Parcel number eighteen dash zero four five dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero two five dash zero 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 Freedom Township Trustees. Five nine three four Streer Road, Manaway, Ohio, four four two five five, reimbursement of eighteen dollars and forty-five cents.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
I, I was gonna be ornery, Vicky, and say, I broke, you broke up. Could you repeat that one?
Not right, thanks. No, no.
Now, Jean, you and I discussed that, and I know that, and I don't remember what it is. Something about, forgive me, we talked about adding a regular agenda item for the county administrator.
I believe that's a wise idea. Todd, apparently, kind of briefed me on this. Apparently previously with the board, uh, in discussions of what the county administrator would look like several months ago. Uh, it was thought that having a catch-all for the county administrator. And if there's any last-minute issues, like, uh, if we don't apply for this grant tomorrow, we're going to lose a million dollars. Those are the kind of things that would filter through that county administrators' agenda item. Uh, I think filtering is everything, you know, everybody rushes at the last minute, but I'm not gonna bring things to you that should have come through the normal process. But there are a few we've seen in the past that it's a last minute, and the only way to get things moving is to do it in that manner. It would, to me, it'd be a standing report and then a request, uh, to consider, uh, like a grant application or something. The other, uh, two items I had would, uh, if you're in agreement with that, then I'm gonna proceed for the first time today.
I think it makes sense. Jean, will we put it on our miscellaneous agenda?
All right, but right, right before it, I think.
Okay. I think that makes sense and would be helpful.
The other one is, I would bring a resolution next week, and again, this really came from Todd's discussions with me about trying to streamline some of the business of the board that is almost like autopilot, which are the bill paying and the wire transfers. I believe that could roll up a week behind, even though it's signed off on and processed, a week behind in the report. The reason for that is like right now, when they're only running one check run Thursday morning. And the reason the email comes to you anywhere from nine to nine thirty with the bills is because that's how quick Todd gets the information from the auditor. He can get it at eight thirty, and by eight forty-five, he's starting to process it into a form. Signing off on those things would still come to, would come through us to get it done in a timely fashion or through the county administrator. But then it would still come back for a full review by the board. And if there was an issue, you could always flag it at that point. Um, I'll put that in a resolution unless there's an objection.
No, that, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Freeze up some time.
Standards where, sure. Where there is a county administrator, I think that would be an efficient way, you know, way to operate, um.
And it doesn't change anything. The auditor's still gonna require signatures on bills from the individual that actually received the widget. And, uh, Budget and Finance is still gonna review it and roll it up. It's just, Todd and I will communicate sometime on Thursday after the board meeting, which gives everybody a little bigger window to make sure it's right. Not that we're finding errors, it's just a little breathing room, so.
Improv practice.
Okay.
Third item is opening the building. I'm sure that, uh, from other conference calls with EMA, you've heard indirectly and directly from Brian, but indirectly from all the departments that, uh, there's no sense of urgency for opening the building. But right now, I'm getting questions and it's a, it's an ongoing thing. I'd recommend that maybe next week, we just set a date, uh, December thirty first. And in that date would be anytime between now and December thirty first. But we will provide a thirty-day window, and I think that came from Kelly Jo. She feels like she needs thirty days to ramp up getting everybody back where they belong when we open the building.
Jean, was it thirty days or did she say six weeks for some reason stuck out? She needed.
It was a lengthy time. I was thinking it was.
Yeah, for some reason.
I'll confirm that before we, we do it.
Yeah.
But I know from water resources and talking with other people, it's like, what are we doing? What are we doing? They need to make some, what I would consider long-range schedules.
Sure.
Everything. And then also reevaluate what we can do, uh, in, internal, like one of our plants is looking at changing schedules and staggering starts because people are just tired of working midnights in the dark, so to speak. Now.
Well, I think it'd be interesting to see the direction from the governor. I know, I, I talked to Mayor Patrick from Garrettsville, and they're actually opening up the Township Hall next week, starting next week. They're gonna start opening, so.
Are they gonna have real meetings, Sabrina, like not virtual meetings?
Now, he didn't say that. He just said that, he wa- he called me to see when we were opening up. And, and because they are next week.
Okay.
So I'm assuming if they're open, you know, I don't know. I, I, I shouldn't assume, but he just said that they are actually gonna officially open back up the Township Hall.
And that doesn't prevent the Board of Commissioners making a decision, you know, July one, we're going to open, and let's say it's six weeks. The second week in August, we're gonna be open for business as usual.
Yeah.
It doesn't prevent that. It just provides for a more, uh, harmonious scheduling, so to speak, between now and then.
So you're gonna check with Kelly Jo to see if it's a six.
I'll get the exact time she goes.
Yeah.
I probably won't have that until early next week, but I'll probably get an agenda together.
Well, I know she's slated to open up the Ohio Means Job Center, I think June twenty ninth, I wanna say.
Subject to Plexiglas, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So it'd be interesting to see how that also works.
Well, and it's really a function, in some cases in an old town hall, there's a lot of room and you can put twenty people in a, in a an old town hall building and there's plenty of six-foot separation for people. If you put twenty people in the board chambers here, it's, it's gonna be difficult, you know? Six foot is not gonna be an option, I don't think so. And so have everybody in a, in a location where they can hear and sit.
All right. Thank you, Jean. I think that makes sense. Um. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky? Vicky?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Bye. Have a good weekend.
Good work with the technology.
We'll, we'll get it figured out.
I don't miss it.
Bye now.
Bye, guys.